In now and then I would like to call the Adams County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Bradford, can I get a, give the invitation?
Yes, let it go, say. Another time is, yes, Father, we thank you, oh God, for today, oh God, Father, we thank you for your election process, oh God. Father, we ask, oh God, if you continue strapping them, oh God, give them the passion and the will to drive, oh God. And Father, we just pray, oh God, for this county as a whole, oh God, we just pray for the residents, pray for our first responders, oh God. We also pray for our kids that's going to, Father, keep them safe, oh God, may he hurt on the day. Father, bless our first responders, oh God, Father, cover them, oh God, as they go forth, oh God. And Father, we just pray, oh God, through this election process, oh God, Father, we ask, oh God, that you, you put people in office that you want in office, oh God. We just ask you, oh God, just continue to move in this place, oh God, move in this county, move in this state, and move across the United States, oh God. Continue to touch our ears as we have peace and love for one another, oh God, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Mr. President. Do I pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I do a roll call out. Supervisor Gray here. Supervisor Hutcherson. Supervisor Milton. Supervisor Wilson.
Present.
Chairman Kirk, page two.
Present.
Chairman Kirk, Brandon Doers. County Scott Snover. And I am present. All right. Now I need a motion for the approval of the July minutes. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutcherson.
Second.
Been properly settled by Supervisor Wilson, will that be in a discussion?
Mr. President, I got a couple of things to be corrected, but I agree with her, ain't nothing major, I agree with her, closing meeting over there. I'm talking about, thank you.
All right, if there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, they have the same right. All right, now I need a motion for the approval of the dockets. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutcherson. Can I get a second? Properly settled by Supervisor Wilson, will that be in a discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I'm looking for, I have nothing at home, but you know what it is that I'm voting against is the same thing. And I, I have it in a few minutes, but you can go on with your motion.
One of the, on youth court, one of the traveling, they had to switch travelers, it's still grant approved. It's docketed that way, the new person that's approved, their check is being docketed for all that. So I need to make sure the board is aware of that, that change, actually get a motion to approve that person's travel. Are you there? Who's the, who's the person?
TFLs is no longer going, and Hollis Hunt is going in her place, both drug court employees.
So you got a motion to amend the motion to include approval of travel?
We're gonna do that after I carry this motion.
Well, let's first do this, correct the docket so that when we approve the docket, this person had prior approval of travel.
Well, you heard me, the attorney?
Uh, Mr. President, what's the attorney? Uh, do we have necessary paperwork in place for this person to do what she's doing?
I believe so, because Chucky was called me Sunday about it.
Well, we need paperwork first, though. That's the way we use it, we don't use the approval number, God.
Well, have you had the paperwork assigned?
And it's on my desk.
Is it on, in your packet of travel to sign, or is it on your desk?
I mean, I have it ready, it's just, it's next to where I have to go on again.
I'd like to move it to hand in.
Yeah, she's no fun for us.
It's been, motion has been made by Supervisor Hutcherson, pending the legal correct paperwork, it's been settled by Supervisor Milton.
And she knows that right now, or this will not happen even now, so.
So, but if there be any more discussion, if there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, they have the same right. All right, now I'll go back. If any more discussion on the approval of the dock, if there be no more discussion on the approval of the dock, all in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, they have the same right. All right, now I need approval of the financial report, Adams County Sheriff's Office, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson. Can I get a second? Been properly settled by Supervisor Hutcherson, will that be in a discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, they have the same right. I need approval for the Chairman Kirk, monthly financial report. It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson. Can I get a second? Properly settled by Supervisor Hutcherson, will that be in a discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, they have the same right. Need a motion for approval and the purchase of monthly financial report. Been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson. Been properly settled by Supervisor Milton, there be any discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, they have the same right, motion carried without delay. Now we down to County, uh, business, uh. Suzanne and Greg Easton. Ms. Suzanne and Greg Easton. All right, is that there? Uh, so now we down to Ms., uh, Lodea Jackson Moore.
Yes. Okay, uh.
Yes, ma'am, you have the scan.
Okay. I have some, uh, letters for each one of you all, that my lawyer asked me to give each one of you all. Wes Newt. Lauren Gaines. Ricky Gray. Kevin Wilson.
Madam Sir.
And Andrew Hutcherson.
Hello, Madam Sir.
Good morning to everyone.
Morning.
My name is Solen Jackson Moore. And I'm here to address something that happened with my son on Sunday, July 30, 2023, at the National Adams County Jail. I received a phone call at approximately 11:21 stating that my son was on the outside of the jail with no clothes on, in what they call a saddle court, saddle court, saddle court, whatever it may be. But at that time, I was not able to get here, so I constantly called the jail, which I did not inform them of the conversation in the phone calls. I did let them know that I had been trying to get visitation with my son. And they said they wasn't doing those visitations, so I said, okay. I tried to contact Mr. Sturtsen on several occasions. But as the day went on, I got several other calls stating that he was outside around about two, a little after two o'clock, swimming, asking for water. I said, okay, I, again, again, I called trying to get Mr. Sturtsen on the line, couldn't get no one. So, 4:45, I parked up here, I walked around this building, and I got to this area right here, where was no restriction to go in, I come between these two buildings. I spotted the top of my son's head. And at that time, I was videotaping the whole time I was coming around. When I got to him, I called him by name, his middle name, K. Runtray. I noticed him in a chair, handcuffed with both hands, both feet, and two pair of boxes, no shoes, no, nothing. Just boxers, handcuffed to a chair. So I began to speak with him, asking him what happened, what was going on. And as I was speaking, he gave me no motion, he didn't open his eyes, he just spoke to me.
Do I get a strength?
Need some water, babe?
No.
As I spoke to him, I asked him, what did he do, why was he there? He responded, "No, I did nothing." He said that Sturtsen had been picking at him, which he has been for a period of time now. This is not the second time he's been strapped to a chair and put outside, but this time with no clothes. It happened back in February, on the 18th of 2022, which I have contacted FBI in Hasburg, Josh Mitchell, on two occasions to report this. I have also reported the fact that I had got several phone calls from someone stating that they were feeding him crack cocaine through his food. And when I requested for the mental health to do a drug test on him, they contacted the sheriff, and the day of his appointment, he was shipped to Rankin County, also done in 2022. But anyways, as I was speaking to Michael outside this place out here, the jailer, Charles Clemens, came out. So I don't know if he heard the conversation, or what, but he came out the door. When he came out the door, he walked up to Michael, as if, you know, he was looking for something. I asked him, I said, why do you all have him out here in this heat with no clothes on? He said to me, "Uh, I'm finna take him in now." Uh, he know what he did, tell your mama what you did. And Michael constantly saying, he didn't know, he didn't do anything, he was this and he was that, you know, and that. Stanley Sturtsen moved him on a gone with some crazy people, and someone threw, excuse my language. But this is what he said, and I repeat it. And he said, yeah, he said he been picking on me, and, um, so I kept asking him, what did he do to make them do this to him? He said nothing, he kept saying nothing. So by that time, Mr. Clemens went back into the, uh, building, come out with keys. He started to unchain him, one arm at a time, one foot at a time. And I noticed on the ground, there was a cup, a full cup of water, and one cup was turned over to the side, on the ground, but Michael cannot, couldn't get to the water because his hands was handcuffed to the arm of the chair. And I do have video footage, but I took pictures out of the footage and sent it to someone. And they put it on Facebook for me. But what I need y'all to do, he needs to be held accountable, because that is inhumane treatment. I didn't get to talk to Michael, I requested for them to have him to call me, I called the next day, about six, I still hadn't spoken to Michael. When Michael called me, he was transported to Macoya Parish. And what he told me, well, let me go back a little bit, let me go back a little bit. I called Stanley Sturtsen, 7:53 Monday morning, he answered, he strapped up a hat. So when I asked him, why did they have Michael outside with no clothing on, and chained to a chair in the heat? And I, and he said that, um, Michael had a couple episodes. And I said, a couple episodes, I see, he said, well, he had to protect Michael from himself and from, and protect his staff, which I didn't know what caused, what harm could Michael have caused when he's already incarcerated? To himself and staff, whereas he's in a jail, whereas I don't know what, what, what he could have done to harm anybody, but still, the conversation went on. So.
Mr. President.
I, I told him I understood everything he was saying, but my concern was still, why was he outside in 98 degrees, 108 index, heat, with no clothes on? And he said, well, he was feeding him, they fed him, we gave him water, that still wasn't answering the question, why was he there?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, he tore a light fixture down. Okay, we tore a light fixture down, but it's on the inside somewhere.
Now, we've, we've just gotten your letters, and we'll take a look at them and see if, you know, what's going on. The Board of Supervisors are separately elected positions, elected officials, the sheriff is his own elected official. The supervisors don't regulate what the sheriff does, the voters of Adams County are his, who he answers to. But we'll look at what your, your complaint is, and, and take a look at it and see, we're just getting this. But ultimately, the sheriff is his own autonomous person, just like this board doesn't answer to the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office doesn't answer to the board.
Okay, I was just told to come here and make my statement.
I'm sorry that you were told that, but we've got your complaint.
And also, I, I, my lawyer told me, you're beating everyone you eleven.
Okay.
And, and what the, the, it is actually a complaint that I will be filed.
Yes, sir, well, then, then we'll take care of it, then, Father, and we'll, we'll address it wherever the board needs to, thank you.
Well, I just wanted you all to be aware of the pictures and why they were on, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and why they were there, and we appreciate the thumbing, uh, definitely not ignoring your concern, but we just, uh, he, uh, we'll look at these letters, and, uh, like I said, the sheriff, and along, and we're gonna just, we'll look at the letters and, and, uh, make sure that we'll get back with you, and one of us will turn somebody, after we respond, but we'll, we'll do it as, give each and every one enough to read it, or whatever else, and, uh, we'll, we'll get back from one of them.
Okay, and one more question I wanna ask.
Yes, ma'am.
And I wanna ask, give the one in here. If that was your child, your mother, your father, your sister, your brother, and even Travis Patton and Stanley Sturtsen, would they have done that to their child?
I don't stand.
I don't think so.
We got, um, we got, uh, there's any, um, personnel issue that we gonna have to have, Scott? Other personnel issue with the management personnel?
With personnel?
What we probably need to do is, uh, yeah, they gonna, we gonna, I know personnel is gonna be done. Um, we'll look over at personnel for a second session, if, if they qualify.
We can do a closed termination.
A closed termination, if, uh, they qualify for that, so. And that's gonna be after we take care, because I know we got plenty of business to take care of. So we need to probably run through our business, and then we'll be able to, um, do, do a closed termination after that.
That's correct, we can do a closed termination, we need to do that at the end.
And we gonna do a closed termination after this, so we got, we got a little bit of, uh, business going on. So as soon as we finish, we'll definitely, y'all be back, y'all be seeing it here today. All right, uh, city government business have been. City government business.
Mr. President, they only have, I, I don't think they have any city government business, but I, don't they suppose they're open to bids today?
Bidding open is tomorrow for Morvetown Road at 10 o'clock.
On election day.
On election day. No, it's not on election day, at 10 o'clock, yeah. Uh, all right, we gonna move on down to the departmental report. Uh, Ms. Verizon Johnson, she's on. All right, departmental report, we can move forward. Don't be shy. Don't be shy.
Peggy ain't never been shot.
No, Peggy shot. Did, is Verizon, Verizon filing a complaint?
We have three tax objections.
Uh, we need a motion to, for me to handle the tax objections, which now is as good a time as any. Would that be a motion to file if we advertise properly and to open, uh, get jurisdiction to open this board up to a public hearing?
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Milton, and properly settled by Supervisor Gray, there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, they have the same right. All right, we'll, public hearing.
You said the first one you had was Ceasefire, was that the one you were doing?
Verizon. You got the copy of their complaint.
Okay, is there anyone here for Verizon Wireless? Cell Co. Partnership, DDA Verizon Wireless, Cell Co. Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. Cell Co. Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. They're not here, they filed a written objection, it was one page long. It states that there are multiple retired assets no longer on our books, that are still being assessed by the county. Antennas and power equipment are both being valued using industrial ID equals 189, which is a 24-year life asset. So I don't know, the first one's not descriptive enough for us to address, but the second one, they talked about antenna power equipment being labeled differently, using the wrong depreciation schedule?
Yes, that's why I gave everyone a copy of just one of their renditions, just one, there's nine. But I can address the first about the, um, multiple, oh, the assets.
I don't think we need to address that, because it's not specific enough for us to even answer it. It just says there are multiple assets that are no longer there. You didn't tell us which assets were on there, how are we supposed to know which ones they're talking about? They didn't put in their objection, I don't know how we answer it, so my advice is deny that one. The second one would be the life year depreciation schedule.
Correct.
What's that, how do you answer that?
Um, well, the power, the power equipment and the antennas, uh, also, when they realized what the multiplier from what the DOR was giving out for the depreciation, the power equipment and the antennas started becoming more expensive where it came up to a little bit cheaper, because it was on a lower depreciation paper. Power's on a 24-year life. Uh, powers are just as important as antennas or the power equipment. The power equipment is nothing but batteries, AC/DC stuff, it, uh, powers the stuff, so when.
Is it connected to the actual antennas?
Yes, through cable.
So it's all part of the antenna structure?
Right, right.
So that's why you, you didn't piecemeal it into, this is, this is tower, this is whatever?
No, uh, I don't know why they even know the difference, to be honest with you, but, um.
Did you individualize those assets out, did you?
I can only do what they say.
Value as a group of, just?
Well, they send me a list of cell, cell site equipment, power equipment, antennas, towers, broadband. You never really know what they are, such as like, the power equipment for 22 is $19,000. Okay, that's, so that's a battery. But the antenna is only like $4,000. But, no, the antenna in 2015 was $700. So I just don't believe that, that $19,000 is power equipment. Everything started changing when they were able to get a hold to the department revenues, depreciations, and their descriptions, their criteria.
So it's different than previous years?
No, as I always, I've always put antennas and power equipment on the 24 years, because they're not gonna change them out if they're that expensive in 10 years. They're gonna wait. And the department revenues, uh, I go with more of the public action 926 than I go with the department revenues.
Is that all part of the, the same antennas, is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, so property property taxes is just kind of, kind of, just like all tax assessments, kind of a form of an art, form of an science. This is, if this isn't a part of the antenna, it's a 24-year depreciation, if it's something else, it's a difference.
Does, does Verizon do the same thing AT&amp;T does, uh, Mr. Jack's students come in here all the time with a list of things they're gonna change out, and, and they change out, do they give you the list of equipment they're changing out?
Yes, but.
So you can start over?
Their tax reps don't give me the same as what the applications are.
But you do get those applications?
Yes, and that's a lot of the problem we, I have with tax reps and Verizon, because I use the applications a lot.
Okay, so you're, you're all up to date on pretty much what they have out there, even though they might say they have one thing, but, and it's this old, but in reality, they probably changed most of this equipment, because everything's updating so fast on these cell phones and these towers, I see it. I've got two or three of them on some of my land, and they're out there all the time replacing equipment, so. Really feel sorry for them.
Wait, you have the explanation of the back sheets on the back, that is stuff they wanted deleted just for this one parcel?
I just have a one-page thing out there.
No, on the rendition that I gave you, so you don't be confused looking at it.
Did you, did you get this?
No, but it's on there.
Where are you gonna be looking at it, I was questioning it later. All the X's is stuff I did not have on, that's at the list. So that's why stuff is not being deleted. I had $420 for cell site in 2010, they wanted a little over $12,000 deleted. Does that make sense to you? If this, if this got X five, I did not have it.
Again, they didn't have, put in their written objections, so all, the only thing that I can read that I feel is articulable about their objection was the life expectancy on those towers, that's what they stated, the other thing is not specific enough for us to make a determination.
That's all, Verizon was going.
I got one question, you say the life expectancy of a tower is 20, 24 years?
Mm-hmm.
What do they do when they go beyond that?
It stays at 20% good.
It's 100% appreciated?
No, no, no.
80%?
Eighty percent.
Because I know, I know one tower's been in the same spot for 50 years.
And it stays at 20%.
Now, maybe they thought they would be outdated sometime, at one point, but they certainly are not at this time.
The law won't let it go lower than 20%.
We got another one from Property Tax Associates for Ceasefire. It just says, preserve an objection, it has no, no statement of, of why they're objecting, it's just a list of PPINs.
I know you've been by. But they have new tax rep this year.
Well, they didn't give us any reason to change their taxes in Ceasefire, they just said, we object, preserve the objection, they left a bunch of PPINs. Uh, Stonehurst objected, they stated that their records aren't matching the tax assessor's records for the values that they reported. Again, one-page objection doesn't really give us any detail of it. Is anyone here from Stonehurst Arms? Stonehurst Arms, Stonehurst Arms? Anyone here from Ceasefire? Anyone here from Ceasefire? Anyone here from Ceasefire? APAC? Anyone here from APAC? Anyone here from APAC? They protest their objections, they're, you know, there are several assets that are no longer on site because they have been retired or disposed of. Or in Nanda County. They indicate, they indicated several things are not on their site with APAC.
Kevin sent me a, um, rendition list this year, and I took off a little over $86,000, you know, they bought Blaine last year. And then when he got the, uh, asset list this, uh, a week ago, he called me and said, well, I don't think we have these others either. And I said, can't just take them off, because you don't think, you got to make sure. And he said, well, I'm gonna object to it anyway, he said, uh, that he thinks most of that stuff is gone. And I said, well, send me a list of, there was two, a little over $2 million he wanted to delete. But he thinks it's not there anymore. Now, last year, Blaine came in, and we went back to the office and straightened out everything that APAC bought, took off stuff that they didn't buy.
This wasn't, everything was on their rendition you took off?
Same here.
Everything that they rendered, I took off?
And, but he wanted more, he wanted more.
Because he thinks?
Yeah. And he's a new tax rep too.
Yeah, it's also. Intax?
Yeah.
Which is not intax.
Right.
Neither is Property Tax Associates.
Yes, there are.
Stonehurst actually did. Stonehurst actually did, that's a question. And Verizon has been generally...
But I did tell him he had to go make sure, and he said he wasn't having to get to the plant to make sure.
When they rejected, they rejected.
Didn't it move to, taken the motor jet?
Somebody?
That property moved by supervisor Wilson.
Sorry.
And property second by supervisor Wilson. Let there be any discussion?
Yeah, I'll spell out all the problems with their objections, they haven't given us enough detail. It didn't bother showing up for the hearing. Some of them are represented by CPA, not an attorney. Taxpayer themselves are supposed to make the objection, they're supposed to render properly. There's universal reasons why we should not accept any of these objections at this point.
All right, there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carry, none.
Mr. President, if you'd like to, we go ahead and take up the board order, which says the publication was done appropriately, that we don't have any outstanding objections, and we're going to equalize the roles at this point.
Final lines of evidence.
File out, uh, request a change of course. They get a motion, it's been properly moved by supervisor Hudson, it's been properly settled by supervisor Wilson. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carry, none. Now, I need a motion to close the public here. They're properly moved by supervisor Wilson and properly settled by supervisor Hudson. Will there be any discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carry, none. All right, this is all you have?
Thank you, yes.
All right, thank you. Department report's next.
Good morning, and it fails a nine one one.
Good morning.
For the month of August, on post the first through the seventh, the PD had two twenty-nine, the JSO had one thirty-five, the National Party Department had nine, with six being in camp. Also, I have a request for a new hire.
What's your name?
Marita Strickland.
I do have a necessary paperwork in hand, Ms. Marita Strickland hired as a telecommunicator, tier one, twelve dollars an hour. I have a necessary paperwork that has been signed by Human Resource. Can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by supervisor Hudson and properly settled by supervisor Wilson. Will there be any discussion? All in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carry, none.
That is all.
All right, thank you. Department report's next. But you came in, oh, she was on that, I called her. Miss, no, Ms. Vanna, I call your name, you come in here.
Oh, permission to post and her, requesting this my key.
Okay, that's your head one. No, no, I sent you on my, this is a new hire, I thought you had somebody to ask.
No, post, post, the John and her.
You got someone that's not there, quit, you fit somebody's place.
All right, she had somebody there, she need a motion. I need a motion for, uh, the likelihood of hire. The advertised for hires. It's been properly moved by supervisor Hudson and properly settled by supervisor Gray. Will there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carry, none.
When is she resigning?
The third.
She already resigned?
She was... So, she's gone now?
Well, she's been gone. She exhausted her, if anything.
Do you have the resignation letter for her?
She's not at work, so we need to replace her.
Right.
All right. All right. Good morning. Good evening, Paul. Good morning.
First of all, I'd like to say that I'm not running for reelection and I have been doing work with the county for the last eight years. But also, it was four months ago, I came to, I didn't come before you, I was just standing here when a citizen came, Charles Moore, and I was speaking of Moore. And I was speaking about how he was mistreated on the justice court. It was last Wednesday, about nine PM, I received a call by my, where his cousin Reverend Ernest Ford Jr., his wife was passed. And so, I, in a rush, rushed to the hospital. While I was there, I turned off my phone because I didn't want things leaving while this was going on. And I turned it back on at nine-thirty. Whether y'all believe me or not, but if you go to W B Jones on Facebook, you see what we're talking about. I have the evidence to prove that what I'm saying. When I looked at that tape at nine-thirty-six, there was Judge Ma, the one I keep telling y'all about, at my front door filming my house and filming my property. I didn't catch her, she's lucky that I didn't. I went to church and asked the pastor to pray for me because I said, if I had a chip of armor, I'd never hit a woman in my life, she would have been the first. But that is ridiculous how, I know y'all can't believe it, I know you can't, but I'm just letting the public know what she did. I have, if you go to W B Jones on Facebook, you will see that that is Judge Ma. I called the sheriff department before I entered the house. You can see her bending down at my front door, we didn't know what she was doing, and taking pictures. Soon as the deputies came, I said, now look at this figure, oh, that's Judge Ma. She tries and do good things like that, but she's lucky I didn't catch her because if I'd called, I wouldn't have killed her. Taser and everything I got would have been ineffective on her. And this is where somebody come from Boston and you come down here and running for office, people vote for you, and you talking to them like dirty dogs. We should not be treated like that. But this is not the end of that. There's other things about to come about this one.
As you know, they don't have any, you ordered severed electric?
You know, I know that, and I know that she, I think she works out of your office anyway, since you said that.
But anyway, we know we don't have any relation.
I hope you don't have no relation, but she's a low-down dirty dog and she's going to jail.
But yeah, we'll get together and we'll know that and inform the public, and we're sorry that that happened, but you know...
And she didn't agree to take, Judge, you think that you didn't, I didn't catch her.
Yeah, well, like I say, and we appreciate it that you come. All right. Move, uh, that's, Department report.
Good morning, my name is Denise Price, I'm the purchase clerk for Adams County. First of all, I'd like to go over that we had bids Friday morning, August fourth at ten o'clock for pest control services. And we had three bids, and all the overall bids results. The first bid was with positive pest control, and they roll up monthly and they said they would pay fifteen hundred dollars a month with their services. The second bid was with web pests, and with monthly bids, it was nine hundred, it comes up to nine hundred and twenty dollars a month. And the third bid was with bait, pest control, and then monthly bids come up to eight oh six sixty-eight.
Where, where's bait at from?
It's not in this area. This is the one we have been doing now, that bait is with us now.
All right, so, I'm going to ask, mostly taken under advisement, and we'll look at it on a later date. I mean, can we have a few problems I think that we didn't have, so. All right, it's been properly moved by supervisor Milton, taken under advisement, properly settled by supervisor Hudson. Uh, will there be any discussion?
Yes, bait is currently under contract still?
They're not under contract as of now.
Are we being, are our buildings being treated at this time?
Yes, we are, but they're not under contract.
Okay, I just want to make sure we don't, yeah.
And I spoke with Scott briefly this morning, and we said, he wants to contact State Audit just to make sure we do have to have bids on pest control because we might not have to, so I will follow with you guys on that.
That's why I want to take that in.
The service probably don't have to bid it, but we always use the bid just to see if we get a good price. But even if you did, you got other ways to describe how you don't...
All right, if there, any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carry, none, okay, next.
Okay, next, I'd like to go over, um, status of the sheriff. I spoke with Wes at Auto Group, Kirk, Auto Group this morning, and he informed me that we have three vehicles at the Ufit now. He's going to follow up and let me know when they will be delivered. We have three more at his facility that he's expecting to take over to the Ufit. So, that's the status on the, um, feelings. And he's waiting on the balance to come in. So, Sean, let you guys know where we run that.
All right, and you have anything else to present?
That's it, thank you.
All right, well, we appreciate it and thank you for what you do.
Ms. Price, and I spoke last week, they want a couple other locations, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, ten other locations where NOLA cameras were requested to be installed. It's about five thousand dollars for those cameras, and she was just wanting some guidance from the board about where they wanted those paid from. It was not for the parks or anything like that, I know we talked about that with recreation, this is kind of just, I guess, high-traffic areas in this county.
On the general funds?
Definitely.
Yes, taking on the general funds.
Yeah.
Yes, because we was informed that the board of supervisors agreed in a previous meeting to pay for that.
That was way back, it was previous.
She just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
General funds.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Department report.
Good morning, Gordon.
Good morning.
Robert Brett, I have county duty, right. I just got a couple of updates, the sirens, the broadmores still out, we got the parts ordered. So, once they get ordered, we'll go ahead and take it down and try to get those back up, hopefully by the end of this month. So, we'll be doing sirens test on Wednesday, so just the supervisors that's in that, that covered the area, broadmores, to let the constituents know that we working on those sirens, and again, to make sure they're signed up for code red, also on that. I'm still petitioning the board, I work on trying to get us a bucket truck. You know, I know budgets are tight, but you know, that's something we need to, we really need to try to get. So, like I said, we maintain these sirens, I catch them before they go bad and then get them reasons. Basically, I did talk to a person, they're in the process now of getting us some quotas on them. So, hopefully during this budget season, we can try to look if we can get one, you know, loaned out, leased purchased. You know, I just got me shutting hands.
And checking in, doing it?
Okay, I'm just, that's, that's, but yeah, I just want to bring it to the board, we still, we still looking, so hopefully we can, you know, find some money somewhere, you know, I know it's beneficial to Robbie too, and also me, that we can use it throughout the calendar, on that. Another thing, I know, you know, we have hot weather, severe weather, it's been hot. I just want to remind people, hey, to stay hydrated. We got some temperatures, they're going to be dropping coming up next couple of weeks, but still, it's still hot out there, so. We're still keeping out. Other than that, that's all I have, any questions from the board?
So, anybody have any question, Mr. Brett? All right, nobody know question?
I have a question for you. More than I have a question for. We're going to need to type burn by.
Yeah, he's going to have it next.
Yeah, definitely.
He's been taking it next.
Appreciate it, all right.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Five four zero. Yes, just want to put a request in for a burn by.
You heard that, uh, request that the fire coordinated? It's been properly moved by supervisor Milton and properly settled by supervisor Hudson, uh, that we'll go on the burn van.
From today until the end of the month?
Today till the end of the month.
You can always cancel when you get it, like they...
Yeah, all right. Will there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carry, none.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Phil Bellis, the intervention court. I submitted a letter to Ms. Page last week. Uh, this is the paperwork that's been signed off by the president multiple times. I spoke with the administrator of this grant, and they finally told me exactly what was wrong with the paperwork we were sending in. I've made the corrections this time, and one of the problems was the zip codes had three nine one two zero, they had three nine one two one. And they had my name as Joseph Bell instead of Joe Bell. So, we've got that straight now with the paperwork, once again, it's handed in so we can access the grant.
All right, you, uh, you heard the request of Ms. Bellis? It had necessary paperwork, and we have been assigned, can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by supervisor Milton and properly settled by supervisor Wilson. Will there be any discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carry, none.
Thank you, sir.
Department report's next.
Morning, board.
Good morning.
So, we had a three hundred twenty-nine nine-one-one request, a total of thirteen hundred and eighty-five total requests. I supposed to direct the nine-one-one for the month of July. The two hundred thirtieth nine-one-one calls were transports, had an average response time of nine seventeen for eighty-nine percent compliance in the city and in the county, fifteen oh eight for eighty-eight percent compliance. Fifty-five refusals, fifteen no patient founds, twenty-five canceled prior to arrival. Inside calls are magically down. We don't typically see that in one month, usually the farther it gets, the more of those we go on. We cut those in half as compared to last month. Two hundred and fifty calls where there were multiple calls at the exact same time for nine-one-one across the county. Nine patients flown straight from the field, and I'm going to tie that into an exact reason. As we relate to our hospital delays, and I've been about nine months tracking these and reporting them to the board, there were a hundred and fifty-nine hours and thirty-five minutes that we spent on the wall at Merritt Mathis. That impacted thirty-nine emergency responses that came in through nine-one-one. That's actually down from last month, we had over a hundred and twenty-one last month that were impacted from nine-one-one as a result of it. The only reason it's down is because I'm basically keeping a full-time crew tied up at that hospital watching patients on our gurneys because they can't get off the gurneys onto the ER. I've got a meeting scheduled for the fourteenth with the CEO over there, the new CEO that's coming in. And if you'll notice at the bottom of the page of your front sheet today, I've got the actual Mississippi annotated code that I'm fixing to be quoting and talking to him about, which references that they shall clear those ambulances for any nine-one-one response within thirty minutes of arrival. They had all their times up right now, their average, their average time to clear a gurney over there is thirty-five minutes and thirty-nine seconds. So, there's five minutes and thirty-nine seconds over on average, and the longest time that we had a truck tied up up there was eight and a half hours with one patient on EMS gurney for eight and a half hours. So, the CEO and I will be talking about that in that meeting, he's brand new, I'm hoping that we're going to get some headway with that. I know they've had a lot of turnover over there, but we're at a point where I'm staffing people to take care of patients in the ER, and that's costing me twenty, twenty and thirty thousand a month to do, and I'm not going to keep burying that bill, I need to staff up. But I just want to let y'all know, we're taking some pretty extreme things, that's a pretty extreme action that I'm taking just to ensure that we're staying compliant with our nine-one-one compliance because that's our target, and I refuse to not hit that target. So, I just want to make y'all aware, I'll be having that meeting next week, and just let y'all know kind of where the system is right now, what that status is right now.
We don't regulate in here?
I know y'all don't, but y'all are the board, it's ready to play to me, and if I'm anything, I'm very visceral with everything that happens. And I can tell you right now, there are sheriff deputies that will tell you, there are delayed responses occurring. And I can tell you right now, there are sheriff deputies that will tell you, there are delayed responses occurring and that's not because of a lack of staffing on our part. Uh, I, that's why I'm telling y'all all this because y'all on the board that regulates me. And I want y'all aware of what's taking place, uh, and, and know the extreme measures that we're doing to get to those responses. We're not sitting asleep at the wheel and just hoping the numbers make it, we're absolutely doing everything above and beyond what's normally should happen for us to get to those calls. So I just, that's my whole purpose for letting y'all know.
Well, I, I appreciate it because that's, uh, was something that I had a question for you, so you already addressed it because I have heard a little bit delayed response on stuff like this. So you know, and I hear it is my job to relay it to you, but you already answered it, so I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. And if y'all do get responses specific that you need something answered on, like I said before, if it's something that's specific that you need an answer to, please get that to me, I'll pull every bit of the facts and give them to you so that you can talk to your member of the public that's asking you those questions.
Yeah.
That way you can give them the exact answer.
Okay, and I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Any other board members have any questions, so, still?
Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Labor reports next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am coming to you as for that, as an inventory clerk, I need to ask for permission for myself, Denise Price and Xavier Hawkins to attend our annual MACA conference, it is here in Mathis, October the fourteenth, start on October the fourteenth.
So it won't be in the trail, so we need, you need any paperwork?
We will be out of the office though, the registration form is in the.
All right, you heard the request, uh, inventory clerk, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, can I get a second? It's been properly seconded by Supervisor Milton, will there be any discussion? Will there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of I? Any opposed, may they have signed right, motion carried now, thank you.
Thank you.
Briefly, uh, Joe Bellin with the intervention court, I wanted to introduce, uh, this is Rick Marino, he is the coordinator for the mental health treatment court here in Adams County. This is Brandy Downs, she was, uh, she is going to be the case manager here for the mental health court manager.
All right, nice to meet y'all.
Set up an appointment soon, he'll be out.
All right. All right, thank you, yeah. All right, we good, all right, Department of Labor report?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm just up here for a routine, uh, pay increase on one of my employees.
What's his name?
Campbell, the same. You should have that paperwork already.
I do have it, it's thirteen fifty, so twelve seventy-five to thirteen fifty. So I do have a necessary paperwork, can I get a motion? Can it, my name is, any budgets routine?
Yeah, whatever.
All right, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins, uh, will there be any discussion? Will there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of I? Any opposed, may they have signed right, motion carried, you know, all right, thank you, sorry, yes?
Yes, sir.
All right, Department of Labor reports next.
Good morning, Board, the name is Sam, I'm with the county manager, and I'm requesting an increase in the mail budget. Yeah, I got it.
Probably has that in her pack, like, how much did you?
It was five hundred and thirty.
How much?
Five hundred.
Forget it.
Yes.
All right, that's, 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 she said, it, it, everything is there, so you heard the request, um, Mr. Sam, taking a motion?
The move?
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins. Uh, if there be any discussion, if, any more discussion, if there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of I? Any opposed, may they have signed right, motion carried now.
And I also like, uh, the question, we hired Cynthia Jones and we rehired Anthony Jones, part-time.
So you got, you said, which Joan?
Cynthia Jones. And Anthony Jones.
Cynthia? And I, I do have a necessary paperwork, where, uh, the, uh, saying, Anthony Jones, you said rehire?
Oh, Cynthia Jones, rehired Cynthia Jones and rehired Anthony Jones, part-time, that's what.
Is this a rehire?
Cynthia Jones was rehired, well, she performed with her head clipped, um, for a week or two and then go through with the full, um, okay.
All right, you heard the request, uh, maintenance, uh, supervisor?
Both of them are part-time.
Both of them, uh, yeah.
Both of them are part-time.
I do have the paperwork that had been signed, so we're going to do the motion, uh, both of them at one time, Cynthia Jones and Anthony Jones, uh.
It's all within your budget, is it worth?
It is.
So, can I get a motion?
I have a motion.
She get a motion, okay, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, properly, uh, seconded by Supervisor Gray, will there be any more discussion?
Uh, it's two part-times to make for one full time.
Right, okay. Yeah, all right, if there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of I? Any opposed, may they have signed right, motion carried now. All right, thank you, Department of Labor reports next.
Morning.
Good morning.
Mary Pedro, the Adams County youth court, I have, let's see here, I have a, um, request for Hollis Hunt to travel Fortega, which we've already discussed, I'm going to get that to you. They were sent over, I thought I had it with me, but left it in the office, um. See, I also have another request, uh, Latonya Earl's recently hired as the program coordinator for the mentoring grant that we received. Um, she's required to do a lot of, um, traveling out in the community, mainly it's local stuff, but to, uh, partner with the Wind Job Center, College of Community College, other local businesses, so she's going to be required to do some travel that we don't know about in advance, so I'm just trying to get a, okay for her to, as long as she stays within our budget for doing some just local traveling in Mathis as part of her position.
Yeah, I mean, well.
And it's all grant covered, all grant reverse?
The department head would approve it before, before it's done, so, it's grant covered within the budget, if you're on.
So we're good, okay. Uh, the next thing I have is I have the, um, paperwork for the Department of Public Safety and Planning Grant, um, which we received, but I need to have it all signed official, and I have a paper for Scott, I have a paper for Brandy, and I have three for you.
All right, you heard, you heard the request, uh, Ms. Mary Kay, can I get a motion?
It's the paperwork, I believe it's already been pre-approved, it just needs to be signed, so I can get it mailed back to them.
Just want to make sure, have been, it's already been approved?
I believe so.
Because I believe I came to you and asked to plot the word already and now.
I want to, I just want to make sure that it don't take but a second for, uh, don't take but one second for a motion to cover you and keep you lead. That's, I'm trying to stay lead, so. Is this, Brandy, you think?
I mean, to spread it, we, I'll write some to sign in front of the minutes, maybe I'll send it to you.
All right, so, that, that properly moved by Supervisor Hutchins, properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson, will there be any discussion? Will there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of I? Any opposed, may they have signed right, motion carried now.
Thank you. Is that for Hollis? That needs to be removed, you just, she just, you just, no, she's, she left us and went across.
So we don't need?
Miss Downs, no, she's on with youth courts, that's his travel for her, is it out of my budget or out of his?
It's a professional drug court.
Does it say adult drug court?
Yeah. A drug court, uh, professional counsel, this is another, so it might not be.
It might have been.
Okay, got you.
Okay.
All right. All right, go ahead, Mr. Dowd.
Good morning, Board.
All right.
Uh, first thing I have, we just, Mr. Middleton and, uh, Mr. Slowber, the Georgia Road Bridge, ER VRF, uh, had been awarded for that, uh, Georgia Road Bridge, went vegan, three hundred sixty-one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, uh. I guess now we can move forward, try to get right away like we on Burke Road Bridge, so that'll be a chat. Right, just want to bring it forward, which is Middleton and Mr. Slowber, you got forward, dirt request at thirty-nine Better Beach Road.
I do have a necessary paperwork in front of me, uh, for dirt requests, it's Mr. Lawrence Bassett.
Someone.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hutchinson, can I get a second?
Second.
Been properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson, will there be any discussion? Will there be no more discussion, all in favor vote by using the sign of I? Any opposed, may they have signed right, motion carried now, right?
I, uh, just want to get a board a little update on, uh, speed W P sites, uh, we went out and looked at sites, group four and, um, another group, I M S has one, J K S has a group, one's done by Kemmo, one's done by Hope Construction. Uh, both groups needed repair work, um, spent almost a month, let's see, even more on those sites. I don't know what to do, um, I know we sent emails out of our office to contractor engineers to do copying the N R C S behind them, but we don't get something done or they don't follow up on these sites, we're going to lose some of those sites.
He'll send you what they need to do, we'll, we wait until you fix them and then you chart it out to you.
Like I said, I just waiting for the board, like I said, we are having issues, and I have a list that we go and we take pictures and paint diagrams and measure cracks and do things like that and nothing ever followed, I mean, we just, I guess, I call myself doing what the contractor should do. Go back and check it for it, you know, and they don't do without, just want to bring it up before the board that we are having some issue and we need to get some of this stuff addressed.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gray.
Document it since soon, dude, sorry.
Mr. Dowd, we have issues with the same people that continue to bid and give low work.
That's what it looks like, Mr. Gray.
So at some point.
Get into that, but that's what it looks like.
What I'm saying, at some point, if, if they not doing what they supposed to do, why are we continuing to allow them to bid and, and continue to give them work when they not doing what they supposed to do?
And that's what I was getting at, Mr. Gray, is that he'll, if he can document it, send it over to us, next time we do these bids, we can take that into consideration. As long as our bid has in there, has work as part of our right to.
And, uh, it's just me, it's just me saying, maybe, maybe you need to put something in writing and let them know that in the near future, uh, we going to take that under consideration, in consideration.
Well, like I said, then it gets worse and then it's a knockdown drag out with them because, you know, uh, somebody else's fault every time something occurs, what they saying, you know, I sure ain't not going before the board and trying to let you know that we do get out, and N R C S is part of it, Mike Green meets me every time we go out to look at them and inspect them to see, to do, and, you know, we just awarded, I think, three, and we got three more coming to the table now, um, so it's, it's, it's a problem.
Do we still have enough money in reserves to, uh, cover what damages are, you might have to go fix yourself?
Not really, not once they get in this shape, and that's what I say, we don't get all of our money until we're finished and signed off, you know, before the year warranty starts.
When does, uh, you, year warranty starts, when they get through with what is wrong right this minute? The day they get it fixed, is that when the year warranty starts or does it start?
Once we go through them, do our punch.
When we go through and do our punch list items, they address those punch list items, and the puncher has sent, sent us a letter saying that they are, that they're finishing the project. We accept that, that one year warranty starts.
And that doesn't start until they get through with that punch list, but he's talking about right now, okay, just want to be, everybody be clear on what we're talking about.
There's that point in time where the project is completed, um, we confirm that one year warranty starts. During that one year warranty, if there any issues with the project, they're required to go and fix that issue. When they fix that issue, the one year warranty for that specific location is crossover.
That's something that I M F put in their contract that J K S didn't, which is going to be real helpful to the county once they go repairs this spot here, it starts, they hold another year, hold that one spot because that's what normally happens. That's where you cover the spot somewhere in it, if it fell and they look, grow or whatever in it to try to fix it for a year, you know, uh.
Fix it, fix the warranty over with.
Mr. Slowber. If these, if they fail to come back and repair these damages and we have to eat it or do it ourselves, uh, can we put them on a no bid list? I mean, if they're going to continue to do this kind of thing, there's no sense in us letting them do any more work.
Yeah.
We're not going to get hung out the drive.
Exactly, so what I was saying is, when we get these, which Robbie just turned into me, we have these issues and we articulate them, we send it over to them and we use as a root part of our basis of deciding who the lowest and best bidder is, so.
We're going to start going with the best bids.
Well, we've always gone with the lowest end, but for certain of laws, that doesn't necessarily need to use.
Yeah, all right, all right, Robert, move forward with it.
Okay, and then the three new sites, which will be Churchill Road, five oh nine Brooklyn Drive and Lofton Lane. Uh, we've got those, you know, those, Scott and Brandy, and in the past, and then Joe signed it and sent it in to get it started. It's got to be signed and sent back in by office, be fifteen, you got that, Brandy?
I got that.
You have it, yeah.
Yes.
Two new sites again? Five oh nine Brooklyn Drive?
Yes, Churchill Road, five oh nine Brooklyn Drive and Lofton Lane. That's three new sites. And then last, was it last board meeting? We, uh, open bids on the three Kemmo guy and two more, Mike, I think, Love.
Yeah, that was one.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they're, you know, hi.
What's the, how does it work with the E D U Ps? I'm trying to make sure we understand who's keeping up with what, uh, when it comes to, you know,
Revert?
The projects, applying for, when does it switch? I know you do, you were always overlooking Robbie, but, you know, and, and George, of course, gets his hands on at some point, but how does it work? Because we don't want anything to not get done, you know, on these, you know, fees.
Thank God, he is looking over, getting in trouble.
Well, like I said, borrow some money, when they, once we do our punch lists and it's sent in, and then they do that, and that's when you, they send you the letter and you submit it back to N R C S to get our final payment on that project, so that's when it's finalized, if once the.
I want to back up, we, we, we're, we're basically applying for our new P W P right now, that's what you forwarded to us, right?
Correct.
And you forwarded it over to the county administrator, that application to the county administrator, is that right? She then will forward it to N R C S after it's approved by the board. Do you get notification back or, or how does it work from there?
We do, uh, may work pretty well with Mike and, um, Norman, and she does try to keep up with it, but he gets it too, he'll get his notification too, but we do try to keep in touch with them just to keep us updated where we at and, you know, when we get reemerged and things like that. Because if, you know, one time we were out watching money, I think we're catching it up now, unfortunately.
George?
The process is, the, someone from the administration office or road department, they apply for the road, then there's a pre-award package that gets sent back to the county. At that point in time, still, somebody in administration road department gets that pre-award document executed, then that is sent back to N R C S. Once that document is, is executed and the funds are available, the time to start the project, then the whole package gets sent back to us with E S R and everything. That's when the engineer starts the design, the surveying, design process, and we carry it all the way through until the final punch list and everything is approved and we send the, send the final documents for reimbursement for the county.
Okay. Got that? Sorry, thanks, thanks, Paul.
All right, another thing I have, uh, they have that Miss Luke Job Fair again on September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Next, I was booked up last year there, uh, just give you some information about the road department and, you know, what. Next, I was booked up last year there, uh, just give some information about the road department and, you know, what they offer for insurance, they look, they punch that. Uh, they have it again September twenty first, two thousand twenty-three, did she go back? She could just set up them and we ended up getting two employees last time.
They need a motion for that.
Do you need a motion now? For that?
I just brought forward.
No, if you brought forward, you don't need a motion because. Neither have I, motion for what?
The E W Ps, the B W Ps, we need a motion for that.
Did they make a motion on those?
Please.
And when she does that, she's gonna put her on her grant sheet, so we start tracking on her grants, you know what I'm saying?
Okay.
Alright, uh.
So move.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, we uh, can I get a second? To uh, allow uh, those three.
Second.
It's been properly uh, seconded by Supervisor Gray and discussion, discussion, well, it's made clear the motion that he's able to submit an application uh, for the last three E W P sites that um, he just named out and renamed them for me, Robert, just to be clear.
The uh, event code was five three one eight and then the projects are Churchill Road, five oh nine Brooklyn Drive and Lofton Lane.
Alright, okay, just to be clear. On that, so would there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have same right motion carry now, okay?
Okay, uh, before you uh, for the games, I had a dead tree, I heard the call on a dead tree on Cloverdale Drive. It is on our right away. Uh, the other trees, I did get some prices on those, get those took down. Um, I said I like them, add this one, if he has some fall, we're gonna do something with it too.
So, I mean, you know, I, do you need permission to get a microphone right away?
I just want to forward, that's what you said while Joe was on paper a minute.
That's, don't say that.
I think it too, you said Cloverdale Drive and fall one, is that what you said?
No, Cloverdale Drive, it's gonna fall in the right.
In the right. Okay.
Okay, that's what you said, Robbie, when will you be trying to get the other ones taken down?
He's on the list to start, matter of fact, Wednesday, he's gonna take the one down on Babbitt. We were waiting on our limb truck to get out of the shop, which is out, he called up last week. So Wednesday, he will start on Babbitt and that's the one of the truck I liked and then part of it fell on the house and other part leaning towards the other house. So we're gonna go ahead and remove that Wednesday and then we'll fix it.
Alright, okay.
The next thing I have, uh.
What tree?
I had those other trees.
Alright, she needs a motion to have that tree.
Alright.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson and seconded by Supervisor Hudson, would there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have same right?
Supervisor Wilson, this is in your area, make no yank, it's a cross pipe in the road, the bottom truck's about, we're gonna have to shut the road down. We ordered the pipe, we got the pipe, it should be in the white heads. Once it, we get it, get it on site, we've already located, once relocated, it's located now. Uh, we're gonna have to notify all residents by phone or maybe paper because it's one way in, one way out, it's gonna take us about a day to dig it up and do it. I might need your help.
Yeah, they, they gotta park the cars on the other side.
Correct.
Okay, I did get a call from uh, James Germany last night and he said that um, they would uh, pump it out or they'd let you break the dam if it was in, if the water was too high.
It looked, the other day it was low enough, when we were there, when we got to locate, the water was low enough. If, you know, it is below the bottom of the pipe, we're not gonna go lower with it, we're gonna stay by the same grade, it's air.
Just so you know, Bobby Simmons said, you have to break the dam and then if we have to land and put some dirt in around in front of it while we work. Danger, okay.
Just to do it, so, but I did wanna bring that up to your attention to let you know, we can hold some residents, might watch TV go to see, but we will have to.
Alright, we, we find a solid, get a solid date on that. Let me know, we'll go door to door if we have to, we got most of the residents' names.
And I know with due to K G Locks, it's only come from supervisors, but our office got a call at two forty for two forty hundred club drive. But you're in, Mr. Gray, that's yours. Ain't had any pictures, I don't have any pictures, but this call was passed a week ago. Old grown lot, grass is growing, nobody take care of it, because it's two forty hundred club drive.
Take a look at it and let me know.
They just called this week.
You didn't, you didn't look at the ones on Tubman, did you?
Well, I haven't.
Okay, I'll look at them, get, get you the numbers.
Uh, next thing I have is the grinding, the milling, it's going real well. They uh, build the M L K uh, first, went down from Airport Road where ties M L K to equipment, I mean to Churchill Road, he's come out, they're on Liberty Road, they made it all the way out, they're coming back down Liberty Road, now milling, uh, and then we got a few spots in Kingston Road. Um.
Is that work, working pretty good? I haven't been out in Liberty Road.
It wasn't great.
I was coming by, I first started and I almost hit somebody.
Yes, uh, had several home calls and E M checks.
Yeah, I can hear it, it worked great.
Somebody was behind your loader coming down the road and this girl inside in a curb to pull out and she hit it right for me and it's like, I'm not hitting that loader. So she did go the other side of me, she rode off in the shoulder and I was like, gee. Wasn't many choices there.
But that being said. Uh, it's working real well, glad we got contact now that we know we can get somebody um, roughly around twenty thousand dollars to get those projects done. Uh, I know the board gave me permission to do this, um, once we get finished, um, I guess I give it to the local whatever city. Uh, we can either offer a bonus or that part of the money out of that road bond, that's about twenty thousand dollars to take care of the S R.
We, about people that's complaining about this very thing, the, the crow hopping on their roads, I mean, it's, it's dangerous, so it needs to be taken care of.
It was a wreck last, it was gonna leave a curve, it's a single vehicle wreck, flipped twice in a curve.
Too fast, gets one of those in a curve, yeah.
Well, like I said, I guess, I have it slower, I don't know, but, you know, the board gave me permission to do it, but that's we're gonna have to look at, get paid when they get to.
Alright.
Alright. The other thing I have is void of amendments. Miss Randy, you have that?
Yes, sir.
I got it. So you want me to read it out or you want to read it?
Okay, just one second. Okay, we are moving four thousand dollars from one sixty-three hundred six thirty-six to one sixty-three hundred six thirty-four. Um.
Are they from coming out of general fund or from different funds?
They are not, they're all within the same budget.
They're shifting money between one sixty within itself or between one sixty and one fifty?
Within one sixty.
No, it's staying within one sixty.
Yes.
Yeah.
I thought I said it was either one or, either one would have been the one.
Yeah, no crossover.
So the matter of thing, that we do have the money there.
Yes, sir.
Alright, well.
Hang on, two more, that ain't gonna.
Do a monitor.
And then uh, we've moved in uh, between six seventy-two and sixteen thousand to five forty-one. And then we're moving twenty-eight hundred from five thirty-three to five eighty-one, all within the same budget.
The money is there.
The money is there.
You heard the request of the road manager?
Second.
Chandler Kirk, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Wilson, properly seconded by Supervisor Hudson, would there be any discussion? Would there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have same right motion carry now?
The last thing I have, uh, we're putting back in our bids for the yearly six month bids, is uh, a degree monitoring. Um, and we were right, waiting on the right wordage or whatever to get done. We've already advertised for our six month yearly bids last week. Um, this'll be a week behind, just won't let the board know, we're gonna advertise that this week and it will be able to be behind the other bids.
Alright, that's kinda, and we did a pretty, anything you would do?
That's absolutely good, and the delay was on my end to get him the proper wording, I just didn't feel comfortable that we, I wanted to make sure whenever we bid out, we'd get funded back from the federal government.
We appreciate you then, uh, letting us know.
Okay, that's all I have, if y'all have anything this time?
Well, I, I do have some. I just gonna let the board know that this is uh, another request, pay request for our tire grant from uh, Meg, it's for eleven hundred and fifteen dollars. That's uh, that's in your office, I mean, that was something you first wanted to bring it up. Other than that, I'm fine, anybody have any other question for the road manager?
I guess this is something, probably you and State Park Road, uh, on the Blackmans, the water system Adams County Water supposed to lay them a line, is that right?
Scott?
I'm sorry?
Adams County Water System's supposed to lay the Blackmans a line when they finish State Park Road. Are they finished with State Park Road or where, where would they be with Adams County Water Association laying that line to them?
I think.
Um, that's, that is.
It was like six meters, six stub outs on meters, they were put, installed in meters is what it was.
I don't know if that was on us or not, I have to go back and look.
We had to look, but I mean, I, I kinda heard it go, go through that, that directory, but I did uh, Scott, go back and.
As part of, as part of the agreement with, you know, paying them and instead of taking.
I thought that we wrote them a check to cover their expenses, to cover their damages and that was the end of our input, but I will.
We make sure about that.
Yeah.
We need the check, because I know something going to the crazy in there, six stub out or something.
Yeah.
That's been two years, it's been a long time on that one.
So.
That's been, been a minute.
Yeah, so, but he'll check and get back with, please get back with me and then I will, after uh, we'll make contact with them about it over there.
Thank you, Robert.
Alright, thank you. Next, Department of Reports.
Good morning, Board, uh, just a update, uh, Morgantown Road face soon, scheduled for getting tomorrow afternoon. Um, hope y'all will see first, uh, see matches. Um, when we're talking about that pre award for um, Churchill, Brooklyn and Lofton, one of those documents, well, three of those documents require signature of the president, so I want to get authorization for allowing the board president to sign all those documents.
You heard the request of the engineer, can I get a motion?
Second.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hudson and properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson, authorized and mentioned sign the document, necessary document by the engineer, but there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have same right motion carry now?
Uh, E W P uh, for Lincoln, for Lincoln Heights, make know you've left two and three received contractors, executed documents on Friday. And so they are ready for the board's president, signature is already got authorization on that. Um, so I just let you know that once we get the board president's signature, we'll be scheduling a pre construction meeting for that project to get it started.
What's the deadline on that project?
It's different contract.
What's the deadline on that?
October, end of October.
Alright.
And the next step that I have is for the striking on the projects, S A P O one nine and whole. Um, for Liberty Road, Cranfield Road and North Palace, contractor is completed. With all the striking for that project, um, we will be scheduling a following inspection for next week if all parties are available.
What?
The day the project turned out nice.
Yeah.
Uh, with that, we, a while back, we submitted a S A P O one ten for a striking project as well. Um, got back with state agent, they're not sure where the ball got dropped, but they have approved, they will be sending approval documents to get that project awarded. Um, even though it's after the June third, they're gonna order, because everything's provided for. So I'm just waiting on the paperwork so we can get started on that.
Can you get some minutes? That, make sure that they approve that document for that deadline, so that offer order?
Which road is that?
Um, it's Kingston, uh, I can't remember.
In Hudson's Landing?
No, not Hudson's Landing, I can find all of those.
Okay, I, I'm just curious, thank you.
Uh, M C W R grant, Dear Field Road, uh, still waiting on the information, confirmation, C W A. Um, they supposed to provide some information, they sent the email and said, does an additional investigation they need to do before they provide that information. So I'm just waiting on them to send the information back over so we can move forward with that M C W R grant.
Not unusual for that timeline, it took them a little while on the other one too.
This, when do I need some signatures on that?
Yeah, so when we were asking for that information, that response to that was, they won't give us that information, they needed the signatures, but they need to do some additional information.
Yeah, we're gonna get those signatures, okay, because I was gonna actually hang around and we was gonna go do it today. But that's fine, I'll let them know that, uh, we're just waiting till we get the, the information that we need.
And the last thing I have is Burke Road, I got a U R, the bicep about the four forty permit, um, that comes from the corporate engineers. Um, state agent and him, I think they're channels coordinating that process to see what happened with that four forty. Because back in January, we submitted all the paperwork, state agent submitted all the paperwork a couple of days later to. And so we're waiting on the response from state agent's emails.
So supposedly the comment period expired on July sixteenth, as far as right ways are concerned.
Yeah.
So this should be the last thing holding us up?
And it shouldn't be, that should have been approved back in February or whatever. We submitted it back in January, so.
We're just waiting for the federal government.
Alright, which brings me to the next question. What do we do on York Road to prevent this year, year and a half long delay getting that project going?
Um, project is being surveyed, so now we can do the design. We do a preliminary design to see how much right away we'll require. We're probably ask a little bit more just to be safe and then we'll start that process while we finish that design instead of post-aging, typically in a design, when we submit the right away, we'll try to best done, done, along the line. Well, any, any different thing is, we're only dealing with inbound system, that would not be a collaborative, so we're just waiting to inbound.
When do you anticipate bidding Burke Road?
Whenever I get the, I can, I mean, if the design and everything, it all depends on how long it takes to get the permit and the final right away document. And then we can be at the party, the product is approved pending right away.
Okay.
Yeah, that agency is the one that asked for this, asked us to do that. There's one delay.
Are there any additional questions, folks, while I'm here?
I don't have a question, but uh, Mr. President, uh, what was the amount we received for the used tax money in Ju- in July?
I'll have to go with.
Well, I just, uh, so I guess we need a, a motion for payment for the striking project in the amount of forty-six dollars. Four oh four for your uh, payment that was already included in the striker, so she just, they need to spread across the minute so we can get there, so I need a motion.
So move.
It's properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly seconded by Supervisor Hudson. Would there be any discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I. Any opposed, may they have same right? Alright.
Well, I appreciate you having time.
And you said, the bid open, let me ask you a question, bid openness is tomorrow at ten for Morgantown Road?
Yes, sir.
And if the bid would be um, not over ten percent, if somebody accepted, would be able to accept the bid, uh, what, what would be our next step?
Uh, the next step, we're actually just getting off the documents back, we're submitting everything to contractor contracts and everything. Them getting all their loans and everything in place and then getting it secured by, I guess, the city and then we'll do the construction.
Okay, alright, there's that.
There was one thing that came up that we want to work that, we haven't worked on that.
We're working on it, I got you, alright. Thank you.
Thank you as always.
Department of Reports, next. John.
Our Jan had a report.
She walked straight to the line. She walked straight to the line.
Are you ready, uh, you ready?
Yes, sir, I didn't know.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, 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 go ahead. I didn't, we didn't, we were kinda talking about something else.
I got you. I only have a, a couple of things. One, the trash report. Uh, Morgantown Road area thirteen bags, Cranfield fourteen, steam plant sixteen, Broadmore seven. Uh, the road crews have been busy this last month doing rodeo, arena projects, and several of the county building projects, which is why they have been on the road as much. I think most of those projects are completed, so we expect them to be back on the roads.
No, they cut the grass on sixty-one south, so it's been kinda rough. And it's still the same thing, the trash trucks are going down the road with no tarp. Well, they got tarp's over them, the tarp's aren't holding. I don't know if we can give them tickets for that or what. Either ti- either the tarp's are raggedy and, and falling off or, I don't know if that's highway patrol, sheriffs, city police, or who could say. But it's the same thing. He had a picture of boiling out a couple of years ago, and I did too, just flowing out of the trucks. And there's no way you keep highway clean like that.
It's, it's all.
Alright, that's my rant for the moment.
Uh, we, we are requesting a budget amendment. Uh, I believe you got the proper paperwork. It's a in-budget amendment where we're pulling thirty thousand out of vehicle maintenance and movement to contractual services for the sheriff's office and contractual services for the jail. So that we can finish the year out, uh, and not be in the neighborhood.
Alright, you heard the request, uh, Chief Deputy, can I get a motion?
So.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Hudson. Can I get a second? It's second, properly seconded by Supervisor Bray. Would there be any discussion? There be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I.
And, Mr. President.
Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carry now.
I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. President, you have a pay rate change. We're gonna hold off on that. That deputy has taken assignment at the school resource officer, so therefore we're gonna hold off on that.
This is John O'Leary?
Yes, we're gonna hold off on that.
Alright.
Uh, the only other thing that I have is, we giving the police department thirty days from last Sunday to go ahead and make arrangements for their inmates. I believe that we're having seventeen of them at the current time, uh, we've been in contact with, I think Scott has.
I didn't give them thirty days.
Huh?
I didn't give them thirty days.
You didn't give them thirty days?
I told them it's their problem, they need to find a solution for it.
You, you did, but, uh, since we're working on a relationship between us and police department, I went back behind you and said we'll give them up to thirty days because they don't have, uh, proper staffing to deal with those inmates at this time. So I thought thirty days would be fair, um, instead of just right now. I would be fair since we've been dealing with this, this one, to give them a chance to get people hired so they can transition.
Alright.
I'm inmate still.
They still paying for them though. They still paying for it.
Yeah, no, no freebies.
Yeah, no freebies.
Is there any other question the board asked for?
Another question for Chief Deputy.
No.
There be no more, uh, thank you for your report. Alright, the partner report. Among the partner reports, there be no, we got any public comments? Public comment. If there be no more public comment, come to the table. Supervisor Bray.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, did attend a conference in Austin and, uh, I don't know how to boil a film about this, but I'm gonna do what I was asked to do. Uh, they had some people up there with all of the, uh, trouble that we having in this world. And, uh, let's say on June the third of nineteen fifty-six during the Dwight Eisenhower administration, com- Congress adopted In God We Trust as the motto of the United States of America. And in some way or form or fashion, we done got away from In God We Trust. And, uh, they got a campaign on putting In God We Trust back in the meeting. So y'all look at it and whatever y'all decide. Uh, the next thing, Mr. President, I, uh, kinda need to address this. Uh, I wasn't at the ribbon cutting, but it's about the youth center. The headline was North Natchez Historical Segregated Community Center Reopens For All People. Now, uh, I'm sixty-three, and I got plenty of calls about this. To my knowledge, the youth center has never been segregated at all. It was always open to all people. All the parts of this community has been segregated and kept certain people out, but the youth center wasn't one of it. And the reason I'm saying this is because I think I was in the sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, or whatever grade. My dad was assistant reparations director, and I know the youth center was open to all people. Never has been segregated, so I just wanna clarify that. I did go to the ribbon cutting at the new school. Uh, nice school, nice event, everything went just like it's supposed to be. And like I said, some people say the school shouldn't been built. I say the school was built at the right time, in the right place, for the right reason. Next, I didn't, I wasn't able to attend the, uh, first charter school celebration ribbon cutting, but I heard it was, uh, a nice event. Um, Sheriff, I, I, I do, I don't know if the president ain't gonna do it or not, but I'm gonna go on and do it anyway. And, uh, I saw that article in the newspaper about corporate Paul Rose, how, uh, he went in and, uh, pretty much rescued a lady in a wheelchair and, and a man. And, uh, I think that's why we send and pay all that money to get our people trained. So when stuff like this happen, they know what to do. So, uh, as supervisor, uh, I don't know if the board wanna do anything for him, but I thought that was awesome. And another thing happened in Austin, Texas. Uh, Supervisor Hudson can attest to this, and I'm gonna get this to you, Scott. I met this young man, and then somebody even mentioned this, insulin pricing scheme. And your county provides a self-funded health plan to, to his employees, has directed contract with pharmacy benefit managers. It is able to recruit funds associated with the inflate, inflation, inflated insulin prices. So I got this from this young man, and, uh, they passing it around and are talking to counties now about this situation. So, uh, Scott, look over there. Something that we need to get on the front end of, we need to get on the front end of. Uh, I ain't got that much today, but my sympathy goes out to the Tyler family, the Martin family, the Gooseberry family, Sim- the Singleton family, the Ford family, the Craig family, Johnson family, the Phillips family, and the Coleman family. And former supervisor, uh, Randy Johnson passed away. Just wanna say this, uh, Sunday at church, the, the topic from our pastor was fellowship builds relationships. I thought it was a good topic, and I did have a conversation with my own child, because, you know, we in a world now where everybody do things on these things right here. And they can't even communicate with each other. They do it over the phone. And, uh, you, you, you gonna have to be able to come face to face with people sometime and have a conversation with them, where you can communicate people, with people other than sending them a text or a tweet or whatever they. And closing, Mr. President, when God open doors, he keep them open. So that mean when God open a door, can't no man close that door. And that's why I feel I'm at, I'm where I am today because God, God opened the door for me to be here. Man didn't do it. Man may try to move you from where you at, only God can move you to. Last, you can be right about what you say, but you can say it at the wrong time, and it makes a difference in this world. Uh, when I was with the city, I was right about saying that we need to change the way we do things and we need more, uh, trades in the school. But I said it at the wrong time. What you see is happening now. So at the end of the day, you can be right, you say it at the wrong time. Last, I'm gonna conclude my report with this. I just wanna, uh, encourage everybody tomorrow to go out to the polls and vote for whoever God tell you to vote for. Oh, one more thing. I don't know if you went to this class, but the election commissions came to us about money. They not only having this problem in Adams County, they having this problem all over, cause they had a class on it. In order to get qualified individuals, you gonna have to pay them more. You, you just can't pay the one twenty-five no more for somebody to be, uh, camp, not campaigning, but for somebody to be at the polls from six o'clock to nine o'clock that night. You, you just ain't gonna get the right kind of people no more, and, 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 uh, especially these young folks. If we don't train them to be able to do what the older folks doing, then we ain't gonna have nobody at these polls. So that concludes my report. One more thing, Mr. President. I got a question for Ms. Brandon. I need you to check out. So every time I get a docket, I see the self-funded health insurance fund on one page, and it always got two different numbers. Then I always get one on a separate page. Is that the increase that they gave us on the separate page?
It should just be one. I, I can take a look at it.
Sometimes you have transfers in to from one, one to the other.
If you have to make an adjustment.
And then five oh one, I believe it or it is, pay makes, that, that's where all your payments come out of.
I'll just let you see.
So you may have oh one that moves money to.
Uh, we did get an incre- increase in, uh, insurance, right?
Yes, you, you got an increase on your reinsurance.
Right, right. Thank you.
All right, two for the Hudson.
I just have two things. Uh, one, so I wanna say, uh, I did attend the, uh, opening of the new school. Uh, it's well needed. Glad to see it happen. Um, like I said there, and I say today, twelve years ago, when we toured the school, uh, there were a lot of things that was needed in that school. Uh, the conditions of the school was so poor to kids couldn't even focus in the school. Uh, the conditions. So I say today, there's a new focus and a new life for the kids for the new school that they have. And it wasn't safe, you know, at that time, so they can have that now. Um, nothing else. Uh, Paul Rose, I can say today that he is a hero, and I can commend him on what he did because he didn't think about his own life. He thought about saving other lives. So today, he is a hero, and he always will be. So I'd like to today, uh, ask this board for a resolution in honoring Paul Rose.
You heard the request of Supervisor Hudson? Um, this show has been properly moved by Supervisor Hudson and properly seconded by Supervisor Bray for a resolution, uh, of Mr. Paul Rose. Would there be any discussion? There be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using sign of I.
Uh-huh.
Any opposed, may they have the same right, motion carry now.
And the only thing I have left is, uh, yes, tomorrow is election day. Uh, everybody go out and cast your vote. Uh, no one tells each other how to vote, but I just tell you to vote. Go out and cast your vote. Thank you.
Right, Supervisor Mills?
Yeah, I just wanna thank Paul for what he did. You know, I first met Paul four years ago, and I ran for supervisor. He lives in District One. And at that time, he was working in Baton Rouge, and, uh, when he came back to work for sheriff's office, I was glad to get him with his military background. Paul's a great guy. Uh, those guys go out every day and miss their life, guys and girls, and we're very lucky to have them in our community. Uh, that, uh, that, and then, uh, ERBR funds coming in on York Road that we discussed. It's been a long time in the works, and hopefully we'll get York Road and Burke Road rolling about the same time, cause both of those residents deserve improvements in that area. That concludes my report.
Alright, Supervisor Wilson?
No, I'm gonna do a little house cleaning here. Um, on, on the school, I'm glad to see that school is built and open. Um, I led the fight against, um, the amount of money that was being asked for six or seven years ago for the school not, necessarily not to be built. But the way they did it, uh, it was a forty-five million dollar project to start with, cause I think they said they got still in for twenty-two million. But the biggest problem with that whole deal was that six percent of the forty-five million was gonna go to people locally off the top of the bond. Two point seven million dollars was gonna be distributed amongst people around the school board and other people. It, it was a big problem then, and I, and I would, I would fight it again today. The reason I'm here today is because people saw that I would stand up and fight, um, against things that are wrong. Um, when Phil, Philip West pointed his finger at me and said, you are not a Christian um, because you didn't, you're against the school, and you're a racist. Changed everything. That's why I'm here today, and I'll continue to fight for, uh, things that are right. Um, but I'm glad the school got built. It got built for half the money, and, uh, uh, it looks like it's a, it's a beautiful facility, and, um, I wasn't there. I was, uh, actually, I had to take my son to go to the dentist that day. I hadn't seen him in six months, and he really needed to go. But, um, other things, um, I, I don't know about the rest of y'all, but the, uh, complaints coming in about the garbage not being picked up, I, I've never seen anything like it. Um, and, and it kinda went over everybody's head when it was reported that our satellite facilities were shut down for two weeks because they didn't have trucks to truck the garbage out. They brought in extra dumpsters. They filled up, and everything just sat there, and residents could not dump their garbage. This is gonna be an ongoing pro- problem, and I, I don't know how we're gonna fix it, but the flames are mounting over there at the sanitation department. And, uh, if residents aren't calling you, I'm really surprised. Um, but I kinda figured this is gonna be a problem. I, I think it's just gonna get worse. Um, Scott, nine eleven, we bought a building. We're, any, are, are we, we're checking to see, or we're gonna have a bid to remodel it? Is that what we're planning on doing?
Yeah, we're, we're looking for cost for equipment and what's the cost to move. And I talked to the, it's fire chief Friday. He was sending somebody over for wiring. And so I was, I can talk Sunday with him, that's his comprises. I talked to Johnny this morning. He was looking at the, the air conditioning, sounded kinda funny, and. And so I was, I talked Sunday with him that it's the prices. I talked to Johnny this morning. He was looking at the air conditioning. It sounded kinda funny and we're gonna start working on that. Before we can do anything major, we gotta get a call, an estimate of cost. We can send that estimate over to the city. And if the city's not on board, this board can make a decision as to what to move forward with.
Everything that's in 911 now, basically, we're gonna put new in the new facility. Is that right? Cuz it's outdated already, is that?
So even if we stay our, stay in our current location, which has been reported back to me, and this actually sounds familiar to me, and it probably will sound familiar to you. Every seven years, you, you get new equipment because the other one becomes outdated and it's reached that, that time period where it's time for new equipment anyway. So whether you keep it in its current location or whether you move it, you're gonna need new equipment. And so the idea being is you wouldn't go ahead and get new equipment in this facility just so you can move it for a hundred thousand dollars. If you want.
Yeah, okay.
That is what's reported back to me and it sounds like it's, you know, unwise.
Where are we with the city? We, we gotta get the proposal for the building and then we're gonna find out if they're on board. They're gonna start their own or?
Yeah, I'd like to have a drop dead price of everything before we, yeah, before we do anything.
Sir.
We had a meeting up here. We had a meeting last week. I'm not sure if you were aware, but the last guy, it was.
So.
Fire chief, police chief, director of E911, chief mill and all of us. And what was gonna be, what was supposed to have been coming to the board, I don't know why it didn't come this morning, was having a backup 911. Every city across the state, in the state of Mississippi, across the nation, has a backup E911 center just in case one goes down. So like you were saying, with the new equipment, what was talked about was possibly, with the old equipment was possibly moving it over to the city, to the police department. Where you have generators and fifteen already where you can save that cost and going ahead and equipping the new building for what's to come, just in case. And everybody has it because of the storms and infrastructure that's happened nationwide. So that's what was supposed to have been presented this morning. I think the reason they didn't present it is because the cost wasn't, the cost analysis wasn't finalized yet. But the T1 lines and all that stuff, the city had already kinda moved forward with the T1 lines, two half mile, one for golf.
That sounds like more money.
Whatever those costs would be, you would present them to the city and ask for them to pay their share.
And they're lasting three quarter of miles far. That, that just, they probably tear both of them before they, yes?
The agreement was that we're gonna move within the next ninety days back to the city. That's what the plans are. And in the meantime, start on the other building as soon as I get your call.
That's what was approved though. And that's why I said, yeah, didn't give it to them, but since I'll ask them to tell.
And when are you retiring?
Decent.
So we might have enough time to work here. Like a rented building, right? Okay, cuz we, we really need to get that, that done. Well, that's somewhat informative, but. Still kinda in the same place. Okay, everybody go out and vote. You're conscious tomorrow. That's the end of my report.
Mr. President. Before we move on, could you explain that to me again? Say the plan is to move into the city building?
There's nothing in, it's in writing yet, but the plan that we made the other day was that we would initially move the 911 just back, back to the city. Because Kyle said that the rooms they were in before are still available. They were gonna do some renovations, but they haven't started yet. And she said they would be fine with them moving back. And in the process, letting us go ahead and start on the other building that we found.
That, 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 that sound like a suggestion to me because at the end of the day, the mayor and the board and the board of superpowers that they just see. That sound like a suggestion from their committee.
You said a decision, but I thought it was a suggestion.
I'm talking about what he said.
Well, I understand. I don't mean to cut you off, Mr. Gray or Ms. Hudson or Mr. Milton, but we know up here right now, you got a board that works for us. At the end of the day, they made a decision, but the decision's gonna be left with us. So they can't make a decision to go back to the city unless the city board and the county board.
I'm just talking about what he said.
I understand. So, but, but, but it was a recommendation. We do have one and they bring a recommendation. And that's, that, that, that's what I think that it meant. Nobody made a decision. They think they had a suggestion that they were gonna present to the board, but they did not have the correct cost analysis. That's why they didn't present it to us.
Right.
Cuz they weren't together with the council on.
That's all it was.
Let me see. So see all the other equipment will go to the PD and then we'll get all the cost. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right.
You do different words.
Yeah.
I just received a request from Mr. Fur, who's working on the project at the ballpark. And he said that we need approval to fill out a credit application. For Musco Sports Lighting lease purchase for the lighting for the park. So I just need to get approval from the board to fill out that credit application.
You heard the request of the chancellor clerk. It's been properly moved by Superintendent Gray and properly seconded by Superintendent Hudson. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, may I have the same right motion carried now?
When the pool was closed, there were some refunds that needed to be made to people who pre-purchased for certain things. So we need to add fifteen hundred dollars to the refund line item under recreation.
All right, you heard the request of the chancellor clerk. Been properly moved by Superintendent Gray and properly seconded by Superintendent Hudson. Would there be any discussion?
Yeah, I had a discussion. When someone got to leave it there and just roll up into the next year?
Yes, they were. That's what Chuckie planned. Not everyone is asking for a refund.
All right, if there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, may I have the same right? Motion carried now.
Received an email from the Department of Finance Administration to the state and the county received five hundred thousand dollars. Towards the Carthage Point Road Drainage Repair and Flood Control Project under House Bill 603. And they provided us with an MOU. We have to have a letter of trace from the funds to the county, as well as we have to have authority to open up a separate account to receive the funds. I don't know if y'all wanna do that all in, just one motion?
You heard the request of the chancellor clerk. Can I get a motion? It's been properly moved by Superintendent Hudson and properly seconded by Superintendent Milton. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, may I have the same right? Motion carried now.
Need to have the July twenty twenty-three tax redemption settlement spread across the minutes for us.
You heard the request of the chancellor clerk. Can I get a motion? Been properly moved by Superintendent Wilson. Can I get a second?
Say.
Second by Superintendent Hudson. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, may I have the same right? Motion carried now.
We received the insurance policy for the St. Catherine Creek Utility Authority from our insurance this week and it has spread across the minutes.
You heard the request of the chancellor clerk. Can I get a motion? Been properly moved by Superintendent Wilson and properly seconded by Superintendent Gray. Would there be any discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, may I have the same right? Motion carried now.
We have the bill checking reports for July twenty-three for the Adams County Sheriff's Office. The lease is spread across the minutes, please.
You heard the request of the chancellor clerk. Can I get a motion? Been properly moved by Superintendent Gray. Can I get a second? Properly seconded by Superintendent Wilson. Would there be any discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, may I have the same right? Motion carried now.
We received the updated continuing disclosure and scope of engagement for Butler City as our bond counsel. Need authority for the president to sign all of that and to spread that across the minutes.
You heard the request of the chancellor clerk. Can I get a motion?
So move.
It's been properly moved by Superintendent Gray, properly seconded by Superintendent Hudson. Would there be any more discussion? If there be no more discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, may I have the same right? Motion carried now.
Chuck Lambert, Scott, does this need to be put on the minutes or not? He sent us over the independent contractor determination for curves for him. So he's, we need to go ahead and put those minutes.
Might as well. Didn't hurt.
You heard the request of the chancellor clerk. I need a motion. Been properly moved by Superintendent Hudson and properly seconded by Superintendent Wilson. Would there be any discussion? All in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, may I have the same right? Motion carried now.
Mr. Lambert and I have met on several occasions with Mr. Lambert, as well as gone through numerous emails back and forth with him. He has presented to us a preliminary budget, which is required to be spread across the minutes by the county administrator at the first meeting in August.
You heard the request of the chancellor clerk.
Go ahead.
You heard the request of. Uh, chancellor clerk. Can I get a motion?
She has to submit a preliminary budget.
He just said it has to follow laws, be spread across the minutes the first meeting.
It's been properly, it's been properly moved by Superintendent Wilson, properly seconded by Superintendent Milton. Any discussion? Discussion. Well, I, I would say it's a preliminary. I was in here Friday and he, we were starting to have a budget here on the fourteenth. I wanna comply with law. So we will have four details. They did not have all the details. So by the fourteenth, when we have a budget here, we'll get a chance to look over everything. So with the proper information.
Can we get a copy of that or is it?
Yeah, I can scan a copy if you go over that. It's.
It's, it's a budget, but, but he did say he did not have all the information on the budget. He was looking for some more information. And by the fourteenth, when we set up the meeting, that he will have the information so we can have a correct budget. Okay, I just wanted to let you know that I was, I had been coming here. I was doing some work over here when they were in here. And so I just wanted to notify y'all a bit of the board.
I'm, I'm confused. I ain't gonna lie. I'm confused. I ain't, ain't, in my whole twenty-three years, I ain't never heard of nothing like this before. But eating at the table on the menu right now, I'm on the menu. I'm getting ate up. I don't know what, what's going on. I'm just being honest with you.
At first meeting in August, the county administrator has to submit proposed budget. And so that's what, that's what she's done.
I understand that part. The part I don't understand is by us not having somebody to do the budget and somebody we hire to come in and do the budget, seem like to me, we would be at the table too.
Yes.
Then and, and after then. That's how you do a budget.
What he's requested is based off of past, past years' expenses, is he's not sure on the revenue yet because there was still some information he was waiting on. So he would like to have a budget hearing next Monday and Tuesday where he comes in to discuss.
Now you breaking it down. I don't understand it because when you put it out there, at first you made it seem like.
We, the county administrator cannot approve a budget. This is simply saying the county administrator has filed a preliminary budget.
You got to put the right information out there.
Minister Lambert was not available today and he will be here.
Is that clear?
You're not.
Okay, that's fair enough. Y'all good? All right, are we ready to vote?
Yeah, we're ready.
All in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, may I have the same right? Motion carried now. All right. Chancellor. All right, chancellor.
We received the approval for the SAP 0110. This has all the signatures. Just need to have that spread across the minutes for Artman. He's in lower river roads.
And that's the.
That's just that we received the signed copy back from the state.
Okay, you heard the request of the chancellor clerk. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Been properly moved by Superintendent Gray. Can I get a second?
Say.
Properly seconded by Superintendent Hudson. Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor, vote by using the sign of "I." Any opposed, may I have the same right? Motion carried now.
Just bringing this back to the board's attention, the application for the St. Catherine Creek permitting is due by September the second. We just need to make sure we have somebody in place to do that for us. And we have one, one more meeting in August, but it's gonna take a little time to get that together.
All right, we gotta find out somebody in place. All right, that's it?
That's it.
All right, turn, Mr. Time.
Is this called county administrator, you said?
St. Catherine Creek.
I've got a couple of minutes properties that we can do. We have one. Seventeen Bluegrass Drive. Anyone here for Seventeen Bluegrass Drive? Seventeen Bluegrass Drive? Seventeen Bluegrass Drive?
It's been cooked.
Well, I, I don't think anyone's here. Oh, is it been cooked? That's why I didn't show. Three. Three Major Boulevard. Three Major Boulevard. Three Major Boulevard. Fourteen Prince Edition. Fourteen Prince Edition. Fourteen Prince Edition. Myrtle, thirteen Myrtle Drive. Thirteen Myrtle Drive. Thirteen Myrtle Drive. Twenty-one, twenty-nine, Second Street. Twenty-one, twenty-nine, Second Street. Twenty-one, twenty-nine, Second Street. I posted advertisements, send notices in the mail. The road department did the same, put the signs on their, on their yard. No one's here. Did defending of those. We can adjudicate them a menace. I think they're all due to grass cuttings. What we could do after we adjudicate them, y'all drive around. If they're still long, stick, give them another seven day notice and after that, we cut it out of here.
What, what you say that again?
The way the law works is now, if we adjudicate them a menace, which we can, you drive back up around, confirm that they're still long, we'll stick a sign in their yard and after seven days, road crew will cut. File thus, the ones that they cut, we'll adjudicate it back on the tax roll.
So we gonna cut it down, right?
Yeah, well, we're gonna post a notice in their yard and then cut it after seven days. This, we're gonna adjudicate it, post a notice saying where it's come to cut and it'll be cut. We don't have to, they don't have to come back to the board. It only has to come back to the board to say it was cut and we're assigning it back on the tax roll. Make sense?
It don't make sense, but. Explain it where people can know, once we go through the process, then how many times we can cut it after that, where we gonna have to keep coming in here and doing this.
Up to a year and up to four cuts.
Four cuts.
They, they always massage this law a little bit. And how they did it last time is after you adjudicate, all the board has to do is give them notice and after seven days goes the cuts. But they took out that once we adjudicated, we can then go cut. We can, we have to give them another notice saying where they've cut in seven days and then we cut.
Uh, I, I really need these lots cut.
Yes, sir.
But if the county gonna cut them, I, I really want them to be careful, man. Because one of the problems, the grass growing up towards the house. And I don't know, mix or whatever in there, man. So I know it gotta be cut, but they need to be real careful. And once we get it down, I hope we don't let it get back up like that no more without. Four cuts in a year.
Typically what'll happen is it'll get on the tax roll, it'll exceed what they want to pay for it because of the penalties and whatnot. Tax purchase will come and purchase them and kind of. Pays itself and his new owner will come and take care of the property. Usually that's what happens. We don't have a lot of repeats. This thirteen Myrtle though is, is a.
Been on it since I've been on this board.
But most of the time they.
It ain't repeating it, more than repeat.
Sam motion, Ted, you gave it this.
No move.
Heard the request of attorney, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray? Can I, been properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson? Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. Any opposed may have a sign right, motion carried now.
They say it.
Mr. President, before we move on, I'm gonna say this, I, 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 I hate for people to, uh, lose their property because they don't cut the grass and we tag a fee. Which we gotta do is we tag a fee to it, which gonna be fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars, because it's gonna be a, a big fee. So if you hear me out there, go find somebody, cut your grass for a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars, because the county gonna charge you fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars. Thank you.
With the mill shutdown, what we've done is we have gotten out of the current region that we were in and gotten into Region fifteen. The old region, Region eleven, uh, is winding down its affairs in that it's trying to get all of its revenues, get all of its bills and line them up. The state of Mississippi has offered a grant to that region to help pay those costs. And so what they need for, from all the boards though, is a one-to-one match. What, I talked with the, uh, account there, he believes he could get enough money for us with this grant to pay off all the bills so that the counties could get that money, that, that match money back. Um, he doesn't, he can't say that for sure until the twenty-fourth, he believes he'll have that information. But the state has asked for a resolution saying that all, all the boards would, uh, join in that match. Um, a resolution is something that you do not, you can, you can just, you can undo a resolution, it's not an order. So the, uh, my, my recommendation to us is to go ahead and resolve for it. And if money's coming back to us at the end of the day, we can keep the resolution. If it's not, the board can at that time decide whether they want to, uh, pay that, pay the differential, but I don't know that we will. But if I need a resolution, uh, we need to go ahead and do that. Again, it's not binding at this point because we can undo it. That's why I say go ahead and do it so we, we secure that money and then we'll know for sure on the twenty-fourth.
No move. Heard the attorney? Requested attorney, it's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray and properly seconded. By Ms. Hutchins. And, uh, there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. Any opposed may have a sign right, motion carried now.
The clerk has submitted to me over the school board's budget, which must be filed with the Chancellor of the Clerk. So I need a motion finding that AIPAC filed their budget with us.
You heard the request of the attorney?
No move.
Been properly moved by Supervisor Gray, properly seconded by Supervisor Hutchins? Uh, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. Any opposed may have a sign right, motion carried now.
I talked with Peggy and with Wayne about the tax abatements of the, of the city properties. What it boils down to is due to the way that old homes are already assessed, that this abatement is gonna have a very, almost no impact whatsoever because of that. And because since the city has already done it, Wayne said it wouldn't really matter, y'all, you know, if y'all wanna do it, do it, it's not gonna cause us any loss of revenues. What I mean by that is, and, and this came up a little bit, when you depreciate it, you, you gotta do three different things. When you depreciate a property, um, you, you take the cost and you take its year, how old it is, and depreciation offsets it. These old homes downtown are already depreciated by the maximum percent. So just doesn't, you know, they, they're really not charged when they rebuild these houses. Uh, we don't go inside the houses to do it, we just do square footage and, and, you know, that kind of thing. So he just didn't see it having really any impact on it, so. It, it, he said the county could do it and it really wouldn't matter.
That, that, that actually, Mr. President, that actually.
Go ahead.
I, I understand what Wayne's saying, but. Is it gonna create?
No, I don't think.
A, a, a problem for everybody else don't wanna do the same thing? And then if we give it to Jimmy Jam, then we got, can't be turning nobody else down because he can't, I, I, I don't know man.
It is limited in where it can be and.
I'm gonna make a motion that we deny.
Say.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor, uh, Gray and properly seconded, we deny, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I.
Right.
I, any opposed may have a sign right, motion carried now.
That concludes my report.
Now, I want you to look at this for all three of you. Alright, um. This is the USDA Department of Agriculture Chairman Kevin Bubba. It is just, uh, basically said, uh. They're doing a session out at the Home and Chillicothe Forest and Habitat and Habitat Project will provide direction and treatment for improving the forest health and our pine. Pine in the Home and Chillicothe Forest. So they are basically asking for, they got commercial thinning, uh, industrial removal, fuel amount of reduction. So they got basically like a questionnaire that they're like, somebody from the county to maybe take part in or something like that. They're gonna bring that. I have a green eye club of Nat's High, I have a request, um. And this is for three hundred and fifty dollars for a four-by-eight banner will be displayed on every football game, that's the three hundred and fifty. Uh, recognition of your sponsorship at each game and then you have a full page adding the homecoming for, um, a hundred dollars. A half page for sixty dollars and a fourth page for forty-five dollars. And, uh, that's how I raise money at Nat's High. So then I will give them to the list of appropriations right here, uh, to the administrator, but let me get my. This is, um. Nat's Festival of Music. For the twenty twenty-four season, they are requesting an amount of donation of ten thousand dollars that will enhance, uh. Their donation, Nat's Literary is sending in deals for their annual donation of five thousand. This is MDOT, MDOT is, uh, letting us know that the applications for the Mississippi Transportation Commission, uh, and Department of Transportation to solicit application for federal funds. Uh, TA set aside funds through the bipartisan infrastructure law bill. Uh, it will be available August first, uh, with the LPD Division and it close October the second at five P M. So I guess we'll get that to our necessary people. Uh, and I'm pretty much sure if it's something that we can apply for, that's gonna help us obtain a little money, we definitely would apply for. So maybe who should, we should get it to the engineer next guy? Yeah. So, uh, Mayor Kay did bring her paperwork for the Mississippi Association of Drug Corps, the Rick Varnow, uh. So I do have a necessary paperwork enhanced, can I get a motion, he's traveling to Oxford, Mississippi.
You made a motion pending her paperwork.
Yes.
We did have. You made it for.
Made it for Hollis.
Heart for Hollis.
This, this a different guy?
Yeah.
This guy?
No move.
It's been properly moved by Supervisor Gray? Your second?
This, I, I, yeah, I did.
Oh, it's.
I think this is for a different department, she was saying wasn't it? That's, that's a different department.
I don't get it.
Uh huh. That's not for the St., uh, Mayor Kayman.
So any more discussion? All in favor vote by using sign of I. Any opposed may have a sign right? This, okay, but this is the hardest one right here, so we already. So I can do these together, uh, do we get clear? Oh, only our, uh, Nav code, did we already have clear proof? Oh, y'all Nav code trip.
It's already approved, you didn't get a sense.
Our code is check. Yeah, well, I'm just being careful, so, yeah. If it's put in my folder two months later, I, you know, I might not remember it, but I might not remember something. It's easier for them to make a motion and stay clear. I just wanted to make sure. Alright, here it is for Ms. Brande, guys, so I think she went across the street. Can I get a motion to approve for her travels? One of them is August twenty-eighth, uh, through the thirty-first to Jackson, Mississippi. The purposes of L S C I M I, uh, conference. And a second trip in August twenty-second through August twenty-fifth to Oxford, Mississippi. And that's to the Mississippi Association of Professional Drug Corps Conference. Can I get a motion?
No move.
Been properly moved by Supervisor Gray? I get a second.
Say.
Properly seconded by Supervisor Wilson? Would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. Any opposed may have a sign right, motion carried now. That, that's your seemingly travel on both y'all's lines. Alright. Well, I think we got everything down. But, uh, I, one of the things I do want to say, uh, tomorrow is election day and it is very important to act and go out and vote. You know, you go out and, go out and cast your vote for the person, uh, that you think will best lead your community and whatever, um. Whatever God lays on your heart, that will be satisfied. And I would say something, as an elected official, something that's kind of, uh, that do disturb me a little bit. Because we are all professional people and when you, when you set out for to be, uh, in this leadership, then we really, it's some things that kind of get out of hand. And, I mean, even in our meeting, as me being the president, y'all know I like to run my meetings fast and stuff like that. But I don't like a lot of personal air and out stuff in the board meeting and some of the things that you can't, I'm, and I'm speaking of elected officials, I won't be thinking, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking about people that sitting in professional, uh, positions. That we should not add things up in a certain way because we are the leaders of the community. We are the problem solvers, not problem solver. And, uh, and we should have enough, just like me, I, I, I ran the campaign and I've had so much negative things, but I refuse to answer negative things because at the end of the day, I heard, uh. Supervisor Gray said something that God is gonna actually be in control of who goes where. And at the end of the day, I am not responsible for other people, I am responsible for my own integrity and keeping myself together. So it's not about what a person does to me, it's all about what I do back to them for that's what God gonna look at. That concludes my report and I thank you. Uh, if there be no more, I need a motion for close determination. It's been properly moved by, uh, Supervisor Hutchins and properly seconded by Supervisor Milton. Uh, would there be any discussion? If there be no discussion, all in favor vote by using sign of I. Any opposed may have a sign right, motion carried now.